Welcome to the Bothell City Council meeting for April 5, 2016. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Roll call is all council members are here and accounted for except for Councilmember Freed who's absent and excused for the meeting. Is it projected up there? Can you put it up there? There we go. We have a few upcoming public engagement opportunities. We're doing this at the beginning of each meeting. It's a groundbreaking ceremony for the multiway boulevard on April 14 at 10:00 a.m. Bothell Way Northeast between 183rd and 185th. Another engagement is the Bothell Health Walk, April 24 from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. Starts and ends at Bothell Operations Center, which is over by Red Robin up there in the northern end of the city. And then Arbor Day is April 30, 10:00 a.m. Stypic Park. It's 18242nd Street Southeast. So please join us at those events. The next item on our agenda is the meeting agenda approval. Do we have any changes for tonight's agenda? See, none? Okay. It's projected agenda. It's not on our... Oh, wait. Now, let's do special presentations. Okay, so we have two proclamations, so I'm going to come down to the podium and present these. Okay, so the first one, both of these are proclamations for awareness in the month of April. The first one will be the Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is a time for us to reflect on how sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in our community. And whereas on campus, one in five women and one in 16 men are sexually assaulted during their time in college, and statistics show one in five women and one in 71 men will be raped at some point in their lives. And whereas children, child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that one in six boys and one in four girls will experience a sexual assault before age 18. And whereas the Bothell Police Department has detectives who have received specialized training in an investigation of sexual assaults and who work in partnership with child forensic interview specialists during the investigation of sexual assault against children. And whereas the Bothell community promotes healing services for survivors of sexual assault by supporting our community partners, including the King County Sexual Assault Resource Center and Dawson Place Child Advocacy Center. Now therefore, I, Andy Rayum, Mayor of the City of Bothell, do hereby proclaim April 2016 to be Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And here's Chief Cummins to accept the proclamation on behalf of the city.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Did you want to say anything?
Yeah, this is really a great honor to have this recognized. It's something that sexual assault affects all communities, all type of people, all ages. And we take it very seriously at the Bothell Police Department. We have dedicated officers and detectives and non-commission staff. But it's not just a police department issue. It really is a community issue. And I think proclamations like this are important therefore. So, thank you very much.
And just to note on that, many cities in King County are also doing the same proclamation for April. So it wasn't just my idea. It was a regional effort to get that as a proclamation. So the next one is the Autism Awareness Month. So each year we do this, April 2016. I'm going to present this to the city clerk. Whereas the City of Bothell is a community of compassion and dedication, dedicated to being a wonderful place to live, work, and raise a family. And whereas every family faces challenges that require faith, love, and hope. And whereas in the United States, autism affects one in every 68 children born today, including one in 54 boys and one in 189 girls, with over 3 million Americans having some form of autism. And whereas autism knows no racial, ethnic, social, financial, educational, or lifestyle and can affect any family and any child, including many families within the City of Bothell. And whereas the City of Bothell supports increasing awareness of this challenging disability and fair funding for research and services for those in need. And whereas it is known that with proper early intervention, education, training, and a community living options, individuals with autism can lead distinguished, productive lives in their communities and strive to reach their fullest potential. And whereas April 2, 2016 is Autism Awareness Day... Oh, yeah, April 2, then we missed it. Autism Awareness Day around the world with many famous landmarks and individuals lighting it up blue in support of autism awareness. Now therefore, I, Andy Rayum, Mayor of the City of Bothell, do hereby proclaim April 2016 as Autism Awareness Month. Thank you, city clerk. The projected, review of the projected agenda. Is there any changes? Councilmember Sandberg?
On our May 10 study session night, there is an item regarding downtown parking and parking enforcement. And I don't know about other councilmembers, but I've heard a lot about that issue from some of our citizens and our downtown businesses. And so I was wondering from the city manager what you expect that conversation to entail and encompass.
This was a suggestion by possibly you or another councilmember when we were creating a projected agenda several weeks ago, or months ago rather. And so it's largely up to the council in terms of the direction you'd want to go. We would certainly brief the council on the previous Economic Development Committee discussion that was held on this topic last year.
Okay. So A, I think what would be interesting for this council to receive would be the, there was a parking demand study done, I want to say in 2012 or 2013, but I could be wrong, that talked about parking for the City Hall block and the City Hall parking garage. So I'd like that parking demand study to be provided to council in the agenda packet for the public to look at. I think it would be an interesting reread, given our current purchase and sale agreement for the, that we're going to hear tonight. And I think that it might be useful to contact the chamber and see if there are people in the business community who maybe want to prepare something in advance so that they can give us their impressions about parking challenges or opportunities that they're experiencing. And then I think we, I would also like to have a conversation about our current contract with our, with parking enforcement. And we've had, we've had some citizens get warning tickets in the parking garage in the supposed free spots. And so I think there is some community confusion over what is, what parking, what free parking is allowed in the, in the parking garage right now. So I think that would be all good things to talk about. And I'd be happy to give a little bit more feedback on what other things we can talk about.
So those are all matters that at least initially are outside of what I envisioned the parking enforcement issue to be, which was council's interest to discuss parking strategies and enforcement strategies throughout downtown, of which we don't currently enforce, rather than specifically into the city's parking garage. And the transportation or parking study that Councilmember Sandberg mentioned was specifically to, to identify the types of land uses that could be on the same block with us and still be accommodated by the city's garage, recognizing the use of the garage also as a office for city workers. So that's really what's the driving force behind that parking demand study. So, but again, it's up to council as to what you want to include in that topic.
Well, I think that the downtown community feels as though there might be some potential or lost potential in the City Hall parking garage. And so I think it's important to have that as a part of our overall discussion on downtown parking. And I'd like to have the chamber notified that we're having the study session on May 10 to ensure that they have, you know, that they can contribute and have a voice.
First, are you done with any projected, projected?
I have, I have one more item.
Sorry, go ahead. I thought he wanted to enter.
Okay. And then I've been talking about finding some time on our projected agendas to talk about the upcoming biennial budget cycle and that whole process. And I see that on April 19, we only have an hour and 30 minutes currently scheduled. And I was wondering if we could take that time to possibly have somebody from finance go over the new engagement tool on the website in the context of educating us and the public on how they can be more involved in the budgeting process.
City manager, are you guys ready to do that? Or is that part of your outreach plan?
Well, we had laid out in the memorandum. I don't have that in front of me now in terms of specific dates that we had identified that we would have much of that discussion, I think, of what Councilmember Sandberg was asking for on a specific date. So if you allow me to go back and review that memorandum with those dates in mind and bring that back to council for discussion at next week's meeting.
Next week, okay.
That's all, thank you.
Good. Councilmembers, baby?
Great, thank you, mayor. I, excuse me, I have been pretty vocal in the past about wanting to look at a parking enforcement program in the downtown area. And looking at May 17, that we've only got an hour and 10 minutes scheduled, I was looking to possibly move that downtown parking enforcement discussion to the 17th to kind of take a three-hour and 30-minute meeting down about a half hour or so. And I'm anticipating that parking enforcement discussion will go longer than 30 minutes. And seeing the hour and 10 on the 17th, I just thought it would make sense to move it there. It has a nice cushion for that, this item does go along with discussion and balances out two meetings in a row as opposed to being hit real hard with a long night. So that was my suggestion that I'd like to see on the projected agenda.
Sounds reasonable to me. Great. So we'll move that discussion to May 17 instead of May 10?
Thank you.
Still hear back from the city manager on the date with the budget discussions. Councilmember Sandberg? Yep. Council, deputy mayor?
I would like to add a discussion to the April 19 meeting about making the Arts Commission a permanent commission or board.
You mean May 17?
No, April 19.
Oh, April.
Yeah. It's two hours and 10 minutes. I don't anticipate it will take that long to have the discussion or vote.
Mayor, if I could, we tried to schedule these items far enough advanced so that we have adequate time to prepare agenda bills. And you'll note on the projected agenda, the agenda bills are actually due and the clerk to allow for people to get adequate time to look at them and view them as of yesterday's date. And so if we could advance that further out into the, in the future, that would be welcomed. And so I would ask deputy mayor if she wouldn't mind.
No, that's fine. I was just looking at which one was longer.
Yes, thank you.
So that is important to note. Right below the date, it says when the clerk needs to have the finished packet, or no, ABs due to clerk and LT. What's that? City manager? No later than?
No later than, yes.
And that's completed with full review?
It's, it allows a little bit of cushion for amendments and modifications, which seem to always occur, yes.
Okay. So how about he schedules the date later? Okay. Anything else on the projected agenda? Okay. I just had one quick one. We talked about in our council retreat about the schedule and how we set up our meetings. What we used to have is the first Tuesday of every month, we'd have a regular meeting, then we'd have a study session, and then we'd have a regular meeting on the third Tuesday. And so I think we need to schedule that at some point to discuss further because I know we had some, some ideas that we wanted to look into about how we can make our meetings a little bit more efficient and more predictable for the public so they know that it's a study session night, or if it's a regular meeting night, or if it's both every night, and to pay specific attention to whether or not we're going to take a vote on an item. So I don't, I don't have a specific date in mind, but we'd like that to come back to council. So nothing was pulled from the consent agenda now? Oh, wait, did I miss, skip right over this? Nope, we do that afterwards. Okay, nothing was pulled from the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Councilmember Agnew, seconded, is that okay? Seconded by the deputy mayor. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Aye? Passes unanimously. All right. Next on our agenda is the visitor section. So I do have yellow signup sheets. If you do want to talk with us, please fill out a yellow signup sheet so that we have your, your information. Each speaker gets three minutes at the microphone up here at the podium. At the, when the orange light turns on, you have about 30 seconds left, and when it turns red, that's when your three minutes is up, and I will try to interject and get you to finish up with your statement. The, came up at the last meeting, so I just need to reiterate a couple of things. One, please speak to the full council as a body, not individual councilmembers. The other thing is that councilmembers are not going to ask you questions unless they direct them through the chair, so please don't answer any questions from the podium unless I give the okay to do so. The first person is Joe Fjor.
Okay, I've not done this before. Okay, I just want to see if there's a way to get additional help with the building department. Ten improvement work and all additional work takes too long. I'm applying for a permit, it's three months.
Could you speak into the microphone, sir?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm trying to get additional help for the building department. Applying for a low-to-TI permit is three months. That's ridiculous. Every city is a week to two weeks. City of Bothell is three months. So I just wanted to see if there's any way we can get additional money or time for building department, applying with you.
It is a budgeting year, but we do, so we will take that into consideration during our budgeting process. The Community Development Director, I think, is he here? No? Peter, could you get this gentleman's information so that, or I'm sorry, Assistant City Manager, could you get the?
Certainly will.
Okay, great. Can you give your, his, him your information, and we'll get to the director that can get back to you? Next person is David Habowitz.
Good evening. I think you know why I'm here to talk about, just to give you an update on where we've come with the Stop405Tolls.org group and what's happened with the toll roads. Now that we've experienced the toll roads, assuming the toll lanes without the toll and with the toll, we clearly have proven that the tolls do nothing to reduce congestion, but in fact adding capacity does. So we're excited to have seen the change, and our group is still looking to reduce or remove actually the tolls the rest of the way and get it restored to being two-plus for car pools and not requiring a flex pass. So to give you an update on, those are some of the things that we're still working on. Also, we know that they've proven to be very expensive to operate. With that, last time I was here, I told you about the Washington State Transportation Commission is having a public comment section where they're looking for feedback on the 520 tolls. They're looking at raising the tolls and possibly extending the hours of those tolls. Of course, that doesn't directly affect us, except that every time they mess with the tolls on 520, that impacts the traffic on 522 and 405. So it's going to have an impact on us even though they're not affecting the tolls on our highways. So I'm encouraging everyone to attend that and give public comment. They moved that meeting, it was originally scheduled for this, right here in this room, on April 21 from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. They've moved it to the Bellevue City Hall from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And I will be happy to share with the council in an email a link to it so you can read all the details of exactly what room, but it should be obvious that they're City Hall. And those are the two things, and I still have a green light. So I'll say, one of the things I have come to appreciate are the trees in my neighborhood. And last spring, there was one maple tree that was enormous, that was cut down by a new, new resident. They moved in and with some six months, they cut down this huge maple tree. And it brought me back to a time when I lived in Tallahassee, Florida, often referred to as the city in the trees. I would love to work with the Planning Commission and perhaps look at what this, what the city of Tallahassee, Florida has for their tree ordinance and see if we can't get one put in place to try to save the trees that we have and still have that woodsy feel even though we're an urban community. So that isn't something that you can address now, but I will certainly be bringing that up, and I wanted to share that with you as something to look forward to.
Thank you, Mr. Habowitz. A couple of things real quick. Thank you so much, the weekends, you can actually get up and down 405, and I've told every single Wash dot member or representative that it's a huge difference on the weekends, and I've thanked them, and thank you for getting that, getting that going. The other thing too, just real quick, on April 19, we have a docketing process for the Planning Commission, and one of the things on the docket is, well, it's not really tree retention, but it's, it has to do with trees and clustering and that type of thing. And I know there's some interest on the council to roll in tree retention, so good timing.
Should I be bringing feedback or expect to give feedback there, or is that an opportunity? Is that what you're looking for?
We do welcome public comment at the April 19 meeting, yep. So come on down.
Excellent, thank you.
Councilmember Sandberg?
Could the speaker reiterate the date of the, is it, is it Washington State Department of Transportation, is it the tolling commission? And you said Bellevue City Hall, and what's the date and time again?
So to, if I may, it is the Washington State Transportation Commission, and they are having a public comments meeting at the Bellevue City Hall, and that is April 21, which is a Wednesday, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. They're holding a similar meeting during the day at a site in Seattle, so that's around lunchtime. But the one that's easiest for us to get to is in Bellevue now.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Next person is Christian Kuyer? All right, good.
Hello, City Council. I'd like to share some, a letter with you guys. So thank you for your time today. I'm Christian Kuyer, a student, a leader and employee, a community member of the City of Bothell. Just like many students at Uta-Bothell, I'd like to express my interest for a residential hall and a dining facility that Uta-Bothell would like to build, and I would like to share the reasons for it. First, I would like to shine a positive light at the, of the Uta-Bothell students. Not only are they great academics, but they're also very busy people. Serving in student government this year has allowed me to hear stories from many students, many of which are very involved around campus and the Bothell community. These students work three-plus jobs to get themselves through, to get themselves through school, leaving only time to study. Those who do, those who do have more time, I see serving around campus, leading clubs and organizations, and volunteering. Being part of Delta Sigma Pi, a business fraternity of about 40-plus members, I have been able to see hand-in-hand how students of this organization serve our community. We partner with the City of Bothell to take care and clean out the drains. We adopted a couple of drains around the city. And we also partner with the Bothell City Police, helping with outreach throughout the community. This is just a small part of who Uta-Bothell students are, and we are in demand of a residential hall and as well as a dining facility, as we can't have one without the other. With the help of my team as student government, ACWB, Associated Students of University of Washington, Bothell, we started petition online, and if you don't mind, I'd like to show you, not sure if you can, it might be a little too small, but we were able to get about 106 supporters for a residential hall and a dining facility. We just launched this recently, it hasn't been too long, it hasn't been up for too long, and we already have about 105, 106 people already signed for showing support for this. This support, this support, this supports the need that our campus needs. This facility is in direct response to the students' concern about the lack of food options on campus. The current availability negatively impacts our health, our performance, and our already tight college student budget. We need to work together as a community to fully support the growth of our campus and the resources we as students require. We are here today to let the City of Bothell know that we as community members, hard workers, dedicated students, are in need of a dining and a residential hall. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Councilmembers, baby?
Excuse me, I just have a comment I'd like to share, and that is, I have not heard objection to a dormitory or dining hall. I've only heard objection to where the university wants to place it. So I think that's important to keep in mind, that it, again, I have not heard objection to that dormitory or dining hall, just where it's located. The people I've talked to, they're, they're in favor of putting an academic building there and a dormitory and dining hall somewhere else. It's just the location of that facility. So please keep that in mind as you talk with others in the community and talk to the neighbors. I think they'll tell you the same thing.
Speaker, if I may, or mayor, sorry.
Sure.
So, yeah, in regards to the location, I'm not sure if you're aware of how the, how the budgeting works for, to be able to actually obtain a residential hall and a dining facility. Like I said, you can't get one without the other. But if you look at the map of Uta-Bothell and the property that we do own, you could also consider how hilly we are, and depending on the location, it will allow us to either have a residential hall. And at all the different locations, this location that we have provided is, is the best location for the amount of beds that we are interested in and the, and the lies works really, really well for what we're interested in. And so that's something that should be considered as well.
Great, thank you. Next person is Leah Shi? Shi? Oh, it's an N, I'm sorry.
Hello, my name is Leah Shin. I am the first-year senator at the University of Washington, Bothell alongside Christian here. And I'm here today to address the dining and residential hall that the University of Washington, Bothell is planning to build. So I'm just here advocating for the students that I talked to, over 300 students, and I got them to write down what is something they want to see change and improve on campus. And a lot of them wanted, you know, better and healthier food options, a place to gather, and more space to live on campus. So I'm just here to echo what they want to say and voice out today. I'm also here to express that supporting the dining and residential hall will allow all of us to do more community projects within the City of Bothell. A couple of, a couple of the community projects that I have done at the City of Bothell, in the City of Bothell, is that I've worked with students on campus to basically create a nonprofit where we collected over $55,000 worth of books to give to students in the Bothell community. And that's something that a lot of Uta-Bothell students do and give back to the community, like Christian said, with Delta Sigma Pi. And building this dining hall and resident hall will allow us to recruit more students in the area and also globally, because we do have a lot of international students that need this space. So that's just something I want to echo again, and that's pretty much it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next person is Jared Guerrero. Guerrero.
Hello, I'm also with the Uta-Bothell Dining and Residential Hall advocates. Uta-Bothell students deserve this new, these new halls. We are the fastest-growing public university in Washington and will have to accommodate for incoming freshmen eventually. Tuition and housing costs are especially high for out-of-state students like myself, and we expect progress to be made with our money. I've been hearing complaints about noise levels that may be coming from a new residential hall. And I've been living in these halls for the past year and can safely say that there's not much noise levels and have, they have never bothered me. there's not much noise levels, and have, they have never bothered me while living in the area. If there were to be exceptions, students would be the first to complain, and resident advisors for each respective hall would take action. Dining halls are another important addition to the university. As they said, they would allow us to have a social place to gather and give back even more, and off the top of my head, there aren't many options in the area. Subway, The Lion's Den, and a Thai restaurant in downtown Bothell are only one of the few that I can think of off the top of my head. And out-of-state students are paying similar tuition compared to the Seattle campus, but without their dining options. They have the av and the cafeteria, and it's not really fair to the out-of-state students here. One Uta-Bothell resident describes the current choices as horrible, and more options would be helpful in improving the social experiences of new student generations and will satisfy their need for diverse food choices. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kennedy Payton.
Hi, so my name's Kennedy, and I'm a first-year, first-generation student at the University of Washington, Bothell. I aspire to major in both neurobiology and dance with a minor in Spanish. I currently live on campus, like most of my peers with me. If I did not live on campus, I'd have to commute every day from federal away, so like, and I don't have a car, so going back and forth, that's like a three-hour bus ride majority of the time, back and forth, so it's like six hours every day. Commuting that much would take out of my, if I did not live on campus, that would take out of my student life on campus, so joining extracurriculars or any sports or any clubs. I feel like it's important to give other current students or, yeah, current students or students who are future students, that opportunity as well, because a lot of students don't live near the campus unless they live on campus. I also feel like living on campus gives them an opportunity to thrive as young adults and kind of build their own life essentially. I'm part of the, I'm part of RHA, which is the Residential Hall Executive Board, and what I do is I put on events with a few other of my peers, and we kind of gather, like, put on social events to get to know other people and try to get everyone connected, so I kind of feel like it creates that sense of a college life that every student needs, and yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Alyssa King.
Hello, my name's Alyssa King, and I want to start off with, I believe that college is about growing into an adult. With being an adult comes a nice load of responsibilities, and I feel that a few of those responsibilities include academics and learning how to take care of yourself away from home, away from your parents. Also, along with those responsibilities comes accountability that I believe we get. So I am a first-year college student, and I currently live on campus. In my months of living on campus, I've learned to take on those responsibilities as a young adult, growing into adulthood, and I've always, and I've also gained the accountability. While being on campus, I've seen a lot of things, two things specifically, that I think are something that we really do need on campus, and that is a dining hall and extra spaces for other students to come and live. I recently visited my old high school, and while there, a lot of the students were considering coming to Uta-Bothell and have applied to come to Uta-Bothell, because it is a small, nice community where a lot of students do thrive for education, and it provides that quality education to all of us. Also, my sister goes to a community college in Seattle, and a lot of her students, a lot of her friends are talking about transferring to Uta-Bothell. So in the next year, we will have a lot of students, new students and transferring students coming in, and so there will be that high demand for a resident hall and dining hall. Also, right now, currently, our food options for eating are food trucks basically into cafes that we have on campus and subway. As said previously, they're not very healthy, and they are expensive, and being a college student, most of us are on financial aid, and we don't have that much money to spend on food that is expensive. And having a dining hall, it would provide more, more less expensive food for us. Also, Uta-Bothell is a very diverse community, and being that it's diverse, there's a lot of diverse students who have different dietary needs, and I feel having a dining hall would meet those dietary needs. And lastly, I would just like to say that you all consider letting us build a dining hall and extra resident halls, because that would be investing in our future, so thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Charity, I'm gonna totally devastate the last name there, did you, just go ahead and say your name at the podium when you get there.
My name is Charity Akidonor. I am a first-year student who lives on campus at Uta-Bothell. I have noticed that there are not many food options for our students who live on campus besides Subway and the food trucks. I have visited the food trucks many times, and they are way overpriced for a college student's budget, to have more options that are on campus and for us not to have to walk. 15 minutes to find something different to eat would be an easier fit for us. Yes, we have the meats at grocery shop, but not all the students can afford groceries every month, and with the Husky pantry, that is just canned food, and who really wants to be eating a can of soup every single day? Having a dining hall will give us more breakfast, lunch, and dinner options, the food for thought and common grounds, have sandwiches and snacks, but what about the healthy options that we need to live healthy lives? Not enough proteins or vegetable options available. These options don't provide full meal for students, which is what we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak during the public comment period? Nope, okay. Moving on on our agenda to awards and contracts, we have AB 16054, Consider Approval of a Purchase and Sale Agreement and Development Agreement with TRF Equities Bothell LLC for Blocks EF&amp;G. And we start off with the city manager providing a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. But before my presentation, I simply want to acknowledge and recognize our interim city attorney, who many of you I think have met, Scott Masal, will be serving in that capacity for the next few months as we continue our recruitment. Scott, as some of you may remember, was an interim attorney with our last recruitment of our city attorney, and so he's familiar with Bothell and has been serving our needs in a consultant capacity over the last several years, and we're delighted to have him back with us for a short period of time. So I'm sure you'll get to meet Scott if you haven't yet, and work more with him as we move forward. So I've been working with TRF Pacific Equities in Bothell to develop a proposed purchase and sale agreement and development agreement for well over a year now. The purchase and sale agreement and development agreement that you have in your packet for Blocks EF&amp;G, clerk, if you could put the, so this represents Blocks EF&amp;G, and this is for a development that will primarily be for an anchor drugstore of at least 12,000 square feet, and total will likely have more than 30,000 square feet of other commercial uses on the block. And so just review with Council some of the specific terms associated with this purchase and sale and development grant. The purchase price, of course, is $1,428,878, plus a variety of infrastructure investments that the buyer and developer will be making. The lot size is approximately 47,000, 48,000 square feet. The buyer will have until August of 2016 to evaluate the zoning and suitability for the property for their proposed development. There's also several extensions that the buyer has the ability in order to extend closing, not extending due diligence, but extending closing. The buyer may elect to extend those periods to December 1 of 2016, through March 1 of 2017, and through June 1 of 2017. All of those extensions require a $30,000 fee that's non-refundable but applicable to the purchase price, and the reason for those extensions of closing is the buyer's interested in, one, assembling additional properties associated with the development that the buyer is already under a purchase and sale agreement and may have closed on the Baskin-Robbins site, but is also interested in also purchasing additional properties to make it even a better development. And second is that we're performing and will be developing a consent decree with the Department of Ecology in which buyer will sign on to that consent decree, providing the environmental identity to the buyer, and this simply gives more time for that consent decree to come to fruition before buyer actually closes. So those dates were key to those two interest areas of the buyer as well as the city. The timing of this project is that following closing, within 12 months, buyer will start construction, and then 18 months after closing is when the development will be open, 24 months if it also includes a residential component. In regards to the residential component, I've included in your folders an omission to the development agreement, which was intended to be in the document that you have before you, that was delivered on Friday, but was not included, and that's the yellow section, Section 5.5. You've seen this language in other agreements where there is a residential component downtown. We also have a parking covenant restricting the additional sale of parking spaces inside that development. And so, Mayor, with that, and Council, I'd be glad to address any questions that the Council may have about this particular development. We also have a representative from TRF Pacific here this evening.
Great, thank you. So in our agenda, it says that we will provide an opportunity for public comment, just so just real quick, please don't leave Bob, or city manager, sorry. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak to this item? Nope, okay. Questions from the Council? Councilmember Spivey?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't see any, I'll make a motion then to approve as presented.
We have a motion and a second to, oh, we already have a motion and a second. So you guys have questions? Would you care, would you be willing to withdraw your second? Would you be okay to withdraw your motion?
Sure, I thought I waited an appropriate amount of time, but yes, I will.
Okay. So who had the question? Councilmember Sandberg? Oh, wait, Councilmember, Deputy Mayor?
I had questions earlier today, and I just thought in the interest of transparency, I would share what those are, so the community knows that we've done, you know, some research. So forgive me, I need a second to gather my thoughts. So I've already spoken with the city manager today, so I hope you don't mind if I reiterate part of our conversation. So my first question had been, why the $30 per square foot? Because the lot P was considerably more, so if you don't mind answering that, again, I'd appreciate it.
No, that's fine. If you remember, Block D, which is across the street, sold for considerably more in terms of a dollar per square foot, that was 100,000 lot that we sold to Regency Centers. The reason why the price established of roughly $35 per square foot for Block EF&amp;G is given its configuration, as well as its restricted access. One of the reasons why the buyer purchased the Baskin-Robbins site or is under agreement to purchase the Baskin-Robbins site is to gain access on Main Street. Without that access to Main Street, this property would be restricted access to SR522 or the Crossroads Project. So the size, as well as the access, led to the lower value established for this lot.
Great, thanks. And then my second question was in, going back to the parking agreement, if you could reiterate how that's going to work moving forward? We had a bit of a discussion this morning, and then you emailed, or left me a message about that, so I just wanted to make it clear to everyone, since it seemed a little bit complicated.
The parking arrangement for this project, it will be restricted in terms of, they'll have a residential covenant on, or parking covenant on the property if they develop a residential as a component of the project, and so that's similar to what we've done in other projects? And Deputy Mayor, I'm not sure, you may be referring to the next, the next agenda bit?
Oh, you know, I'm confusing the other site, I'm so sorry, yeah. But I do see this parking covenant on here, so I appreciate that. Okay, thanks.
Is that all your questions? Okay. Councilmember Sandberg.
The city manager and I also had a discussion today, but could you explain, so there's a, we have a, an environmental, what is it, environmental indemnity and release agreement on this parcel and a nearly similar one on the city hall site. Can you explain again for us and the public what the consent decree is, what steps we have yet to make to get to a consent decree, and what the city's, you know, responsibility is in, with respect to environmental cleanup? Because we are essentially indemnifying the purchasers from any kind of cost from environmental cleanup, we're taking that on ourselves. We do that because we can get state funding to do that, but if you could just explain that, that would be great.
Sure. The consent decree is a mechanism the Department of Ecology offers for municipalities or others who are performing environmental cleanup. Certainly, it's something that's required or in agreed order, it's another mechanism in which you receive state funds to utilize for that cleanup. In this case, we're indicating to the buyers and developers who will be acquiring debt to build a construction project, they're going to want to know, their debt financiers will want to know that the city of Bothell is committed and has pledged to perform the cleanup in accordance with Department of Ecology regulations. So the consent decree simply provides that mechanism to provide that environmental indemnity, telling the buyer or the developer that the city of Bothell will perform the cleanup in accordance with Department of Ecology standards, and then allows them to go forward with their development, knowing that that satisfied their debt financiers, that the city of Bothell stepped in and is going to be performing this cleanup on this site. And on this particular site, it's from the Ultra Dry Cleaner Site that's located on the city center block, primarily in the southwest corner of this block, in which the plume, the environmental plume from those solvents has contaminated a piece of Blocks EF&amp;G, which is, and again, we'll continue to have monitoring wells on that block, which is the reasons for the consent decree that we're entering into with Department of Ecology, and the buyer and developer will also have an opportunity to sign on to that consent decree.
And so we don't have a consent decree yet, but the steps are in motion to get to that consent decree, and you told me it might be like a 12 to 18-month process to achieve this consent decree with Department of Ecology, and then it could be however long it takes for those monitoring wells to come up clean until Ecology signs off and says, "City, you've done enough cleanup, and now you're done."
That's correct. In this case, it's a little unique in that we've already started performing the cleanup before the consent decree is issued. In many cases, a consent decree is executed and then the cleanup occurs, which is the scenario that will take place on Block D. In this case, we've already performed the cleanup or have been in the process of performing the cleanup, we're under a second round of chemical injections on the southwest corner of the city center block, and we'll perform those injections, continue to do monitoring, and determine whether another round of injections is necessary. But it's likely that the consent decree won't be finished, won't be negotiated, and accepted by Ecology for another 12 to 18 months. Again, this will give some time for the owner to extend closing to more, to see what that consent decree will look like and the requirements that will be with that consent decree before they determine if they're going to sign on to it or not. But this is well on its way in terms of cleanup, but it's likely a cleanup that will take several more years to complete in order to bring the levels of contamination below the state standard.
And the buyer will not close until they have a consent decree?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, do we need this Section 5.5, the parking covenant? Do we need to make an amending motion to incorporate that, or?
If you would do that, I think that would be most helpful and warranted, yes.
Okay.
Councilmember McNeil?
So I just had a question on the timeframe. I think you mentioned two years, is that right? So they won't close for two years, or?
No, the 24-month period was after closing, if they have a residential component, they'll be open or completed within 24 months, or 18 if there's not a residential component, and then they'll start construction 12 months after closing. In closing, they have some ability to extend that on three occasions based on additional dollars that they would provide to the city.
So best-case scenario is, when would we potentially be seeing development on those parcels? parcels?
Best-case scenario is that the closing would occur on September of 2016, and then development would start within a 12-month period.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Councilmembers Spivey?
Thank you, Mayor. I would move the recommended action to include a parking covenant of 5.5 on the handout that we received and the City Manager had displayed.
We have a motion and a second to authorize the City Manager to execute the proposed purchase and sale agreement for Blocks EF&amp;G with TRF Equities Bothell LLC as in, as all in substantially the same form as presented except for Section 5.5, which was provided to the Council on the dais tonight. Any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Sammer?
I'll be supporting the motion. I think it's important to know that we have a buyer, a developer, that's interested in a property that has environmental restrictions on it. And so we have somebody who's interested to do that. Sounds like, from what the City Manager has said, potentially this buyer is looking at catalyzing that entire city block, or as much of it as it can. So I think that that is going to be really important for the future of downtown redevelopment, especially as it relates to Main Street and Main Street enhancement. So I recognize that the price per square foot is lower, but the property is constrained. It has access constraints along with environmental constraints. And so I think this is a prudent move to move forward to further downtown revitalization.
Any other discussion on the motion? Councilmembers Spivey?
Great, thank you. I too will be supporting this motion. I think it's, it will be a great project for our city. It will be one of the key projects that people coming into our city will see as they turn on to the Multway Boulevard. It's another key portion of our economic redevelopment. And this project will have a nice mixed-use component to it. That will not only bring retail, but office space with the potential of some residential, but it brings that office-based component that we have, don't have a lot of. And it will be great to see that it will have more activity related to people working in the downtown. So I think this is a good move, and it's, it'll be great for the city, so.
Great, thank you. Deputy Mayor?
I'll be supporting a motion as well, for all the reasons stated in previous, as well as I think it's a critical link back to our Main Street properties, so thank you for your work.
Anybody else? We're good. I will too support the motion. This has always been, I've always really looked forward to seeing these two lots, especially Lot D and EF&amp;G, go vertical. It's right on the Crossroads Project, and it'll just be a huge improvement to the current situation. I just want to make sure everybody understands, though, that the timeframe, I mean, best-case scenario, will be construction in '27, 2018. So yes, we're selling it tonight, but just understand, there's going to be some time between now and when the construction happens. And it's not because we're not doing anything, it's because there's cleanup action that's taking place and it needs to close, and then they need to construct. So thank you, City Manager, for your work on this. I know this is a long time coming, and I appreciate everything you've done for the city. Are we ready? All right, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Aye, opposed? Passes unanimously with Councilmember Freed absent. And next item on our agenda is AB 16-055, Consider Approval of a Purchase and Sale Agreement and Development Agreement with Bothell Hotel LLC for the City Center Property Lots 4, 5, 6, and 8. And we have a staff presentation by the City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This is somewhat of a milestone moment for the city in that this is the last purchase and sale and development agreement that I'll be bringing to you associated with the 25 acres that the city initially purchased. When you add up all the square feet of all the purchase and sale agreements that we have, we have sold back for vertical development consistent with our community's vision, it's close to a million square feet on the ground floor of retail, commercial, and office opportunities. And of course, that doesn't account for the multiple floors that get constructed as part of each of development. So with that, I've been working with Bothell Hotel LLC, 360, also known as the 360 Hotel Group, for well over the last year on bringing them to the City Center Block. Of course, this is a purchase and sale and development agreement for a hospitality project for two separately branded hotels of approximately 190 rooms combined, plus retail along the Multway Boulevard. It will include a Marriott Spring Hill Suites and a Marriott Town Place Suites, one located on the Boulevard, which will, which will be at a height limited by the city's code of six stories, and the other located on 1083, limited by height to five stories, largely driven by, or all driven by, the city in terms of wanting to preserve our plaza, not have it shaded with another hotel or building that would cover and shade the City Hall Plaza. And so that was an early interest of ours when we developed this block. We performed a sunshade analysis and determined what the appropriate height should be, regardless of what our zoning allowed for, so that we could assure ourselves that much of the time during the year, that space would still be open to sunshine when the sun is out. So a few of the terms associated with this purchase and sale and development agreement is, of course, the price, and it's listed at $1,635,847 plus numerous infrastructure investments. It includes Lots 4, 5, 6, and 8. Give a map here. I've seen them misplace my map. You all have it on your packet. If I find it, I'll put it up before I'm done speaking. Maybe the clerk could have. No, thank you very much. And so the lots that are selling are Lots 4, 5, 6, and 8. You'll note that proposed Lot 9 is a lot that the city's still going to continue under its ownership. This is a lot that will be built as an additional public plaza, much like the public plazas that we already have on the City Center Block. If you remember, when we designed this block, we wanted to make sure that we had public plazas almost every corner of the block, and given its geographic location, as a space for public gatherings. And this is just another opportunity for a public plaza and gathering space for the city center. And so we'll be retaining that lot, but selling the others, 4, 5, 6, and 8 to the developer or to the buyer. Buyer will have until October 1 of this year in order to evaluate the zoning and suitability associated with the parking, associated with the project. One of the unique items associated with this development agreement is that it also includes a parking lease, in which during the due diligence period, the buyer will evaluate how many parking spaces they would like to lease from the City of Bothell, City of Bothell's parking garage, between 80 and 100 spaces. Those spaces will be leased to the buyer and developer for a 24-hour basis. They also have the ability to lease some additional spaces, up to 15, on a limited-time basis between 6:00 PM and 10:00 AM. The initial rent for the spaces, as indicated in the parking lease, is $150 per month per space. The initial lease term of the agreement is 30 years, which also can be extended by the buyer for five years on nine different occasions. So for another 45 years, this parking lease can continue to operate. If the parking lease certainly does operate for 75 years with the initial lease term being 30, $180,000 would generate $13.5 million in revenue back to the city, revenue that can be used in any way that the city determines it appropriate to be used. Recognize also that that parking lease of $150 per month per stall will also be adjusted by a inflation index, CPI, as well as subject to market adjustments every sixth year or for every five-year period capped at 150% over that five-year period. Also includes some key infrastructure that the developer will be contributing, $446,863 for the construction of the Multway Boulevard access lanes and sidewalks. The public plaza that I mentioned a few moments ago, that the developer will be contributing one-half of the cost associated with that public plaza. The full cost of the plaza is estimated at $723,610. The buyer or the developer will be contributing one-half of that cost, and they'll actually be building that plaza. And so, but half the cost will be paid for by the developer. The developer and the buyer will also be performing certain frontage improvements along 1083 at an estimated cost of $131,000. The buyer is committed, as well as included within the development agreement, to start construction within nine months following closing, and then open within 24 months following closing. And so I'm pleased to recommend that the Council authorize me to execute the purchase and sale and development agreement with Bothell Hotel LLC. And I'll also note that the Ownership Management Group of the hotels is also here this evening.
All right, great, thank you, City Manager. So we didn't have it listed, but is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this item? Nope, okay. Council questions? Deputy Mayor?
So on the Agenda Staff Report under Development, it talks about the design and plans for the hotels shall be urban in character and incorporate thoughtful, engaging, and inspiring four-sided architecture. And I'm just curious how we achieve that?
Well, that'll be a topic that will be discussed certainly when plans are prepared and the city has the discretion to approve those plans and approve those designs to ensure that the buyer and developer is carrying forward the intent.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Sammer?
Can you tell me what are the ground-floor retail requirements for this project that fronts on Multway Boulevard?
The Boulevard, all projects, whether they're, this project or any project on the Boulevard, is required to have retail in accordance with our code. And a certain amount of that retail could be accommodated through the hotel activity, the lobby activity, but they also plan to have other retail tenants, of which have not been identified at this point.
Is there any ground-floor retail requirement for 183rd, the frontage on 183rd?
I don't know that there is any ground-to-air retail requirement for 183rd. The plans for 183rd from the hotel group is that will likely promote some pedestrian activity. That's the location of meeting rooms, that's the location of a pool that's being planned on. So although there may not be retail there, I think there's still, there will be interest that will drive people and, or at least allows for some pedestrian interest along that sidewalk and that thoroughfare.
And since we have the developer here, are, can they give us any preview on what they're intending? I know that there haven't been any permits pulled or anything like that, but like, any idea about what these buildings might look like, what the size of the garages are that are being built?
I can tell you that the hotel's interest at this point is to have one room for one parking space for each room. And so if they lease 100 spaces from us, means they would likely construct their own garages, one on 1083rd, one on the Boulevard, that would also accommodate 100 spaces. In terms of what the buildings look like, I haven't seen any designs yet that they have completed that would indicate that. That would be a sort of a work product that would occur after the purchase and sale agreements have been executed. We've seen massing, sort of diagrams and visuals that we've showed Council in the past, most recently during the retreat. I didn't bring those with me this evening, but it just simply shows you sort of a massing of a box, two boxes, if you will, on 183rd and the Boulevard.
Okay. Well, I just, from this council member's opinion, one of the things that we hope to see as a part of our downtown revitalization was a really robust retail component, and that ground-floor retail component, and if they're here.
Yes.
I just would like them to know how much in support we are of that, and that we would like to see as much retail in our downtown core as we can.
And I believe there were, that all the developers would understand that as our code requirement, that is an interest of our downtown to create that pedestrian activity on the ground floor.
Okay. And I asked a lot of questions about parking already, and I think you've covered them. But we, I did have a question about how the city can lease spaces built with tax-exempt financing?
Yes.
And you explained that to me earlier, but I think it would be important for the listening audience to hear that as well.
We've studied this thoroughly. We have an opinion from our Bond Council in regards to leasing any of the space that has been constructed with taxes and dollars for private use. And our Bond Council's included the lease by the hotel of 100 spaces plus the additional 15 spaces is within the, within the boundaries of what's allowed under the IRS regulations or federal regulations. And that, that use of that lease represents 7.06% of the proceeds from the tax-exempt 6320 bonds. And so the way that that was terminated, that 7%, and we're allowed up to 10%, you can, you can generate or you can lease 10% of revenue, or 10% of the space, back to a revenue-producing use utilizing tax-exempt bonds. And the way that that was calculated is, we looked at the total bond amount, in this case, $51 million, once you include the capitalized interest. You determine the cost of those 100 spaces. In our case, $32,000 a space, $3.2 million. Comes up with a calculation of less than 10%, in this case, 7%. So it's an allowable amount, and it's an amount that we had anticipated moving forward when we built the additional spaces within our garage in order to accommodate the type of density and accommodate the type of development we wanted to see on this block with us.
That's all the questions I have.
Okay. Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. So most of the questions I had were answered, but I did have a, does this property also have cleanup that's required?
It does. This is the site, the source site, if you will, of the dry cleaner solvents that is also contaminating Blocks EF&amp;G, which you just approved. And so, but the source side of contaminants are listed and contained within Lot 9, property that will continue to be owned by the city and used as a public plaza. So we'll continue to perform the cleanup. We'll put as many injections that are necessary in order to get the cleanup levels below the state standards.
Okay. And then is there a projected, similar to EF&amp;G timeframe? I think you said nine months to 24 months or something?
A better timeframe in this case in that the agreement requires that closing would occur in October of this year, and then construction starting nine months after that. And the hotel group anticipates construction timeframe to be an 18-month schedule, although the development agreement allows for a 24-month schedule before opening occurs.
Okay, great. And is, something that would maybe help me, and I don't know if you could put this out to the community, but maybe we can get an overall projection of all of these projects, since this is the last one, of where we are timeframe, when, you know, construction may begin, things like that, so the community can kind of get a sense of when our downtown will actually be completed.
Certainly. And I found this other visual I wanted to share with Councils is also in your packet or visuals you've seen in the past, but this is the public plaza. Turn it around. Turn it around?
Yes, I know.
Easier? So this is the public plaza that gets constructed on Lot 9, in addition to the plaza that we have at the opposite of the block, right to the, to the east and the north, or the southeast of this council chambers. And then again, the other public plaza, although much smaller, in terms of steps that lead down to the Boulevard on the other corner.
You want another turn in at questions? Go ahead.
So it looks like we, you can leave that graphic up, because it looks like it'll be a nice community gathering space. But I'm wondering if you've thought about having an educational component about the long-term monitoring that's going to go on in that site? Because there will be monitoring wells on Lot 9, this public plaza.
There will be. They'll largely be hidden in the landscape areas. And so our hope is that cleanup will not continue in a long time period, but when we say a couple of years, we hope that that will be able to reach cleanup levels within those first few years rather than a long continuous 15, 20, 30-year timeframe.
Okay. I just think any time you can educate the public about the consequences of their actions is a good opportunity.
But we can certainly look at it and try to time that with how long we think the actual cleanup will take. But the wells, you, walking by, you'll likely not see them, at least the plan is not to have you see them as part of the landscaping.
Do you have any questions? I have a question, so I didn't want you to make. Okay, there we go. So, and I'm glad you brought this up. So the City Center Block, we had a parking demand study done a few years ago, and it did establish which land uses would work on this block with the City Hall. did establish which land uses would work on this block with this, with the city hall. Could you go over basically what those land uses were that we, we could have tried to get into this block?
Well, we certainly, hotel hospitality was a group that was identified that could be accommodated with, within the city center or within the city hall parking garage. A large office tenant would be too much demand, too much peak demand, that it would simply, at least in the size of what we're building here with the hotels, we simply couldn't accommodate that. We could accommodate some retail, certainly first-level retail. It got pretty difficult also to accommodate any sort of residential on this piece of property too, which at one point in time was, was a consideration.
Okay. And then have we checked in with McMinniman's to see how they feel about having two new hotels across the street from their new hotel they built?
I have identified this as a very early project with them, and they had no concerns whatsoever about competition. These are hotel brands that are going to be different segments of the market, and so neither of the hotels had any concerns over any sort of cannibalization that might occur with another hotel coming into downtown.
So no, no saturation concern or anything like that?
No.
Okay. And then how many parking stalls do we have in the garage in city hall?
Correct me if I'm wrong, probably we're started by, I think it's 257, thereabouts.
250-ish. So we're looking at maybe rent, leasing out 100 of those stalls, so at least.
Between 80 and 100, yes.
Between 80 and 100. What does that look like? I mean, will there be a sign on them that says, you know, you can't park here unless you're a guest at the hotels?
There will, there will. 70 of those spaces are located on the lowest level, P3, and then depending upon how many more are leased, whether it be 10 or 20, it'll wrap around into the P2 level or the second level, the middle level of the garage. But anything, what's being planned is will be a gate. And so where the hotel parking starts, there'll be a gate, and so you won't have any ability to necessarily access that if you try to go down there, because that'll be accessed by key card for the hotel guests.
Okay.
But there will also be signage too. We know we need additional signage in order to accommodate multiple tenants that utilize the garage, not just the city hall use, but we also have downtown patrons that will want to use the garage during hours in which the city hall's not operating, as well as hotel guests, which will be using the garage on a 24-hour basis on the assigned spots.
So that's kind of where I was headed. So during the day, basically that parking garage is not available to the public then? Or will they, the 150 spaces will still be available? Because, because right now I think they're employee permit parking only, and then there's a couple of guest spots during the day.
Long-term, that is correct. Today, we have opened up, because we don't have anyone utilizing those 100 spaces, we've opened up those up for the public to use whenever they like to, during the hours of operation of the garage. So, but long-term, once another tenant is on the site with us, the public, there are spaces for visitors of city hall, both in the garage as well as around the block, they'll be able to use those spaces. But it's after hours that the garage largely becomes available for public use, after city hall office hours, and then during the weekends and holidays. All of the spaces that were previously assigned for city staff vehicles then become available for the public.
And is that still at 6:00 PM where the, where the public can park in the employee parking spots?
Is it 6:00 PM or 6, yes, 6:00 PM?
6:00 PM, okay.
But largely the garage is emptying and out at a variety of different times between 5:00 and 6:00 PM. That 6:00 PM mark was chosen, and we may modify this, was chosen to allow a little bit of opportunity for all the cars to sort of exit without having to compete for spaces while other people are coming into the garage. But we can adjust that as, as we move forward.
Okay. And we won't have any issues with the hotel on that? If we, I guess they wouldn't care, never mind.
No, they're going to have their own, likely have, I mean, although they won't be able to restrict necessarily hotel guests from always entering only one location, they're going to be directing most of their guests to come in on 183rd.
Okay. Got it. Okay. I'll entertain a motion. You'd like to move the recommended motion?
Second.
All right. So we have a motion and a second to authorize the city manager to execute the proposed purchase and sale agreement and the proposed development agreement for the city center property with Bothell Hotel LLC, all in substantially the same form as presented. Do we have any discussion on the item? On the motion? Councilmember McNeil?
I obviously will be supporting my motion, but I am very excited for the city of Bothell to see this last piece of property sold off, and for us to get underway with the finalization of our downtown. So, thank you, City Manager.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Just good, Deputy Mayor?
So I just wanted to briefly discuss, or I guess talk about some of the constituent comments that I received today. There was some, some issue, I guess, with, with the parking. And I will be supporting this motion because I think it's the right thing to do. And I did hear the concerns about parking. However, I, I think turning away $180,000 a year would be the wrong thing to do. And, and so while I heard public comment, I also will be supporting the motion because I, I think in the long run, it's, it's the right thing for the city to do. So I appreciate your work on this, City Manager.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Spivey?
Great, thank you, Mayor. I will be supporting this, and I also want to congratulate the city manager and thank you for all your hard work on this, as well as the rest of staff. This is the, the final piece of the puzzle as far as purchase and sale agreements go, and it's, it's a huge and wonderful milestone. We got here through the Great Recession. We were doing things that nobody else on the West Coast was doing, and it was because of our council and the city manager and the great staff we have that we were able to move forward on our economic redevelopment through the Great Recession and, and after. Two hotels, an additional two hotels in the downtown, I'm not too concerned about sitting on LTAC. We, we find that there's, even though that committee is established to put heads in beds, there, there is still a great need for hotels in Bothell. We are, much like our project out here, a crossroads to the Puget Sound region. We have people coming from Canada and from down south, and they're finding the affordability of our hotels here in town and the central location to so many things to do, and then they're finding out that we're also a gem to visit and do things. And unfortunately, Steve Holmes had to leave, but it's community businesses like his that will benefit from the hotels that we have here in the downtown, because they'll be able to walk down to Bothell Landing Park and go to What's Up paddleboards and rent some of his bikes and canoes and paddleboards. And that's, that's the type of thing that these hotels will be doing for our community. They'll be energizing our downtown, going to our restaurants, shopping our shops, and those people staying in these two hotels will be over McMinniman's, I guarantee it. So I, I think this has been a great move. I want to thank the hoteliers for seeing the vision of what Bothell has to offer to you guys, and I, I fully support this.
Councilmember Sandberg?
I'm going to support the motion for the reasons stated. I think it's going to be very exciting for us to have hotel traffic in our downtown area. Like you said, bringing in people who want to enjoy our city, spend money in our city, and I think that's, it's going to be a terrific addition. In relation to that parking demand study, it did seem as though having a hotel on that site was the most efficient use of parking. I think we're getting a great price for this project. We have partners who are interested in this parcel, again, even given its environmental constraints, willing to work with us on that. I think these are all really great positives for this, for this project. The one concern that I heard from the community was about parking. There is a resentment, I guess is how it could be characterized, that we are considering leasing out parking spaces in the city hall garage, which they felt had been somehow promised or the expectation that that would be available for public parking for the rest of downtown. And I can appreciate that the availability of the parking is, can catalyze the, the hotel development, which is important. But people in the downtown business area were also hoping that the availability of parking would catalyze their business and relieve some of the constraints that they have about parking and the complaints we've had about parking. So I'm going to support this motion, and I think as a council, May 10th, when we have this item come before us, or May 17th, excuse me, study session, that we have a conversation about all, all of downtown parking, not just for our, our newcomers, but also for our existing businesses. And the reason why I ask that the parking demand study be given to council is that there were suggestions in there about in the future consolidating employee parking and freeing up employee parking to allow for general visitor downtown parking. And so I think that that might be something that we need to consider in the future. I think that we will respond to our community's concerns about providing more parking in downtown, if we have at least consider that as an option and, and, and discuss that. And there might even be possibilities for, for expanding downtown parking elsewhere, not just in the city hall parking garage. But I am excited about this, and I, I look forward to the vertical development on this block and completing the last sale of all of our downtown property.
Councilmember Agnew?
I too will be supporting this motion. And I'd just like to say nicely jobbed, City Manager. The last piece is there. We finally did it.
Thank you.
So I would, I too will be sort of supporting the motion. Thank you, City Manager, for years and years and hours and hours of going through purchase and sale agreements with me and other council members, and obviously with the developers. Just really looking forward to kind of turning the page from doing purchase and sale agreements to seeing the, the fruition of the downtown revitalization come to life. So really looking forward to this, and thank you for all your hard work.
Welcome.
With that, I think we're ready to go. All right, so all those in favor, do I, do I need to repeat the motion? Are we okay? We're okay. All right. All those in favor, say aye, raise your hand. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously. And next on our agenda is ordinances and resolutions, AB 16-056, consider adoption of ordinance regarding transportation impact fees. And we kick off with a staff presentation by Don Feen, the Utility Development Services Manager.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Don Feen, Utility and Development Services Manager. So this is the consideration, adoption of the ordinance regarding the transportation impact fee increase. A little background from before, recap. RCW 82.02.050, impact fees are allowed to ensure that adequate facilities are available to serve new growth and development, and to promote orderly growth and development by establishing standards. They shall be imposed for system improvements that are reasonably related to benefit new developments. In January of last year, we came to the council for an update. The program had previously been updated in 2008 and 2011. The Growth Management Act requires regular updates. Project construction costs changed due to inflation and changes in scope. New projects were added, and a new study was completed in October of 2014. The process involved developing a rate study with consultant peers and peers, determining a fee project list, growth estimates, trip generation for various land uses. The rates were calculated, the study was completed, and the council adopted the rate in January 2015. At that time, they recommended the increase to be phased over three years. In February of this year, at a study session, council directed staff to bring back the transportation impact fee ordinance reflecting a completion of the full increase to be implemented over two years, not three. And here's a little recap of the, the projects. The, the 2015 program has $162 million worth of projects compared to 134 in the last plan. And the cost per PM peak hour trip, which is how we calculate the fees, went up about And it shows what single-family and shopping centers would do if the increase was brought up to the full amount. Here's a little graph showing how the, how things have been impacted in association with the downtown revitalization. Some major projects have already been completed, and there's still a couple left. We have the Wayne Curve Phase 3 in Multway Boulevard, which are going to be the next You look at the transportation capital project revenues from all sources, you can see that grants make up the biggest chunk. But when you look at the actual local fees that go towards that, traffic impact fees are the number one source of matching dollars to get those grants, very important to consider. And this shows how we compare to other jurisdictions. We're fairly solidly in the middle with our, that's with our new rate, if you approve it tonight. When you look at overall impact fees, because the city does not have school impact fees or fire impact fees, we're relatively low. This shows the different options we were looking at. Now with the phase, with the two-year phased increase, we could expect to receive about $250,000 more than the current transportation impact fee that's in, in our current ordinance, current code, I should say. So the recommended action is to adopt the proposed ordinance amending Bothell Municipal Code, Chapter 17 pertaining to transportation impact fees. And that I can take on. Any questions?
Any questions? Yep. Councilmember Sandberg?
Can you put this slide back up? It was, I think it was the one of the first tables you put up, and it had impact fee revenues. So what do the $34.4 million and $41.2 million refer to?
That's a hypothetical, how much could come in from all the, from the, if we were able to achieve all the, the development that could take place.
So, so like, for example, if, if all the development that was allowed in our comprehensive plan based on what the plan designations are, that's
Right.
what we could bring in, but what we actually bring in, which was in your pie chart of local sources, was more like a couple million?
It was.
It's the next one?
Yeah.
No? Oh, okay, so.
So we, over, over an eight-year period, 2006 to 2014, because there was a recession during that period too, but it was 9 mil, 9.2 million, 9.3 million.
So, when you go back to that table, the previous table, that just kind of gives us an idea. We know what our, the, the project costs, the first row is a pretty good guest, guestimate of project costs, because that's what's captured in our capital facility plan.
Yes.
Okay. And then the impact fee revenues, that's more of a hypothetical, what we might be able to collect?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. No more questions? No more questions.
Questions, anybody? I have a couple. Okay. So, Mr. Feen, so it says that there's $161,760 worth of projects to support growth and 25.5% of it was used to estimate per trip. So the other 75% of the cost is, how's that support? Is that through taxes?
I'm not sure what you're referring to. I mean, if you look at the, in reality, what's going, what generally happens is these larger projects, we need grants and we have to have grants to make them go forward though. And that, I think 75 to 25 is a pretty good figure for that. I mean.
I got it out of the study that we had when we set the rates originally. It's on, sorry, I just went past the page, page nine.
Page nine.
Should show, page nine of the study. Okay.
Yeah, that would be.
Anyhow, so I just, what I'm trying to point out is that for the impact fee that we're talking about, it really would fund theoretically 25% of all the capital projects we think we need to support transportation for that new growth. And the other 75% is acquired through grants, property taxes, real estate excise tax, that type of thing.
Yes, yeah.
So I just think that's really important for the public to understand is that although impact fees, you know, typically are passed down to the property purchaser, they, you have to understand that, that the rest of the 75% of the projects rely on the rest of us to pay, to pay for those projects to occur, whether it's we pay the state and then the state gives us back, back to us in grants, or if we actually pay property taxes at the city. So I just think that's a, I don't know, I always thought that was a fascinating part of this, that it's only 25% recovery for supporting those new.
Good point.
And then the other thing I wanted to bring up, oh, actually, I wanted to ask real quick, what is the deal with Snohomish? Why is, how is that $14,000?
Not sure what they have going on there, actually. That's a good question.
Okay, I thought maybe you'd.
Very odd.
And then the other comment I had was that we had a public survey done less than a year ago, and the number one issue that people, by far, the number one issue is transportation. And it's not uncommon, this, in Bothell, just with other cities as well, I've seen other surveys, it's really interesting actually to look at other surveys from other cities. And transportation is just a huge problem. So any, any way means possible that we have as a city to try to relieve that transportation problem is, I'm in full support of. So, and I understand that this is an increase of impact fees, but at the same time, it's either that 25%, or we're not going to support 75%, we're going to support a larger percentage as the public to support these new, new developments. So I'm totally getting into discussion, but that's all the questions I had. Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
I wanted to move the recommended action. Oh, sorry, James has a question.
Okay. There's no second. Councilmember McNeil?
Yes, I had a question. Can you, can we go back to the, do you have the map showing the different projects? I believe it's on page five of the study that we have. So in looking, in looking at that map, out of the 162 million, how much of, how many of the projects would be on the north end in the Snohomish County side?
It looks like we have 228 and SR 524. And probably the northern part of SR 527.
So we're going to have some pretty significant growth in the Snohomish County side of things. So are we taking into account that growth with these projects?
Yes.
And how we're, how we're collecting and what the impact fees are going to be going towards? So I guess if we're growing and we're, we're getting, as an example, 500 permits out of the Snohomish County side of things, and we're collecting impact fees for that, how are we, how are we providing the services for the area that it's impacting, I guess?
They looked at the, the whole city as a whole, and the impact fees can go to, that from projects can go citywide, but so they look at the city as a whole and where the growth-related projects are needed. And that includes some from Snohomish County and quite a few from King County as well. But it was looked at, the whole, the whole picture is looked at as far as needs, level of service requirements and growth thrown in.
So we, will we have an opportunity as we're collecting these impact fees to study that further on what the impacts are in the northern end of our city?
They would do that probably on the next transportation master plan update.
Okay.
And they've done, they just did one, I did think they believe one was just completed a year or two ago, so.
Okay, because I know that I'm, I go to a lot of the transportation committee meetings and, and one of the things that I'm hearing is that we have the opportunity to work with Snohomish County. And I know we're talking about impact fees, but you're talking, you talked about grants a little bit and how to get funding for that. My question would be just making sure that where we're developing, where our growth is happening, we're actually helping in taking care of that impact that we're creating up there. Okay, thank you.
Councilmembers, AB.
Great, thank you. So regionally, I, we, we, all the different government entities, they collect their traffic impact fees, but Bothell's unique in that we have a couple on-ramps that people outside the city and where most of the Snohomish County growth is occurring is really outside the city in South Snohomish County, but they're all going through our town to get to 405. So what are we regionally doing? Are we getting impact fees from other, from Snohomish County to help take care of their people coming through our town to get to the state highway?
Yes, we are actually. And actually, next week, there'll be a study session for the continuation of that. We've been doing that for 10 years. There's an interlocal agreement with the county, roads in the city, excuse me, developments in the city that impact Snohomish County and vice versa, developments that occur in the county that affect Bothell roads. By that interlocal agreement, traffic mitigation, it's called a reciprocal traffic mitigation, interlocal agreement, developers in the other jurisdiction pay towards the other jurisdiction as far as their impacts.
Right, because they were doing nothing for the 39th Connector, which had been on the books for years and years. So I just, are we really getting any money out of them, is my question?
Yeah, last year, last year, we received $800,000 from Snohomish County developments outside the city limits towards Bothell, towards Bothell roads.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, how about a motion?
I move the recommended action.
All right, moved by deputy mayor, seconded by councilmember Agnew, to adopt the proposed ordinance amending Bothell Municipal Code, Chapter 17 pertaining to transportation impact fees. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Councilmember Sandberg.
I'll be supporting the motion. I think it's important that we collect the full amount of the impact fees that were identified in the study sooner rather than phasing them in later. So I'm definitely in support of that. And, and then just in response to some questions that were up here, we'll, we'll be looking at transportation projects when we revisit the capital facilities plan. And so that's a good time to think about if we have all the projects necessary added to our CFP, our TIP list, or the transportation improvement project list.
Councilmember Agnew.
I'll be supporting this motion. It was my idea to bring this back to council this year. I felt that last year, we probably did a disservice to the citizens and to the city, and it looks like we made it right. So I'll be gladly supporting this motion.
Any other discussion on the motion? Deputy Mayor.
I obviously will be supporting my own motion. I think it's very clear that we have a lot of traffic issues, and I think the citizens expect us to do something about it. And we know there's the need and we've justified that need, and I don't see any reason why we wouldn't vote for the full amount right now.
Any further discussion on the motion? I just want to point out that councilmember Agnew is correct, that this was his thing to bring back. I'm glad you did, though. This was one of those things that kind of was upsetting, I guess, for me as well as a councilmember. Last year, was it last year? No, year before, year before that we passed it. Was it last year? Okay. Yeah, because like I said, it's, it's only 25% of the cost, so shouldering more of the cost over to the residents that live here now would just didn't sit right with me either. So thank you for bringing it back. All right, we're ready for a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously with councilmember Freed absent and excused. We are on to AB, thank you, Mr. Feen, on to AB 16-057, consider approval of a resolution authorizing the city to make grant applications to the Recreation and Conservation Office. And we have Mr. Keats from the Parks Director to provide a presentation.
Yes, thank you, mayor, council. I didn't prepare a PowerPoint for this particular agenda item. The RCO, Recreation and Conservation Office, is in their biannual grant cycle, and the city has the potential to apply for a number of potential grants for a number of projects. One requirement the RCO does have is that the council or governing body adopt an authorizing resolution, giving authority to make the particular applications. And there's actually four separate resolutions because they ask for a resolution for each particular grant category for which you'll be making an application. So we'd be probably looking at the Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program, the Youth Athletic Facilities Fund, the Aquatic Lands Enhancement Program, and the Land and Water Conservation Fund. Project specific would be development project possibly for Park at Bothell Landing, a possible drainage improvement project for Cedar Grove Park. And then we would try to get some trails money to supplement the federal funding we already have for the bridge at the Park at Bothell Landing. And the remaining would be acquisition grants for Shelton View Woods and the Wayne Golf Course. So staff recommendation is approving the authorizing resolutions submitting, for submitting grant applications to the Recreation and Conservation Office. And that concludes my report. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Keats. Is there any questions?
Councilmember Sandberg.
So on, on your table, on your staff report, it says that we have a secure match for the bridge and the park at Bothell Landing if we were to successfully get those grants?
Correct.
And so where does the, where does the match come from for the park at Bothell Landing?
It's my understanding that in the past, it's been park impact fees.
Park impact fees? And would that be the same thing for the bridge at Bothell Landing?
The Bridge of Bothell Landing, the match money would come from the federal grant that the Public Works Department's already secured.
Oh, okay. And then what are, what might be some ways that we would be able to change in the match secure column, the noes to yeses for projects three through nine, which are the Cedar Grove Field Improvement and DNR and Wayne Golf Course acquisitions?
The acquis, I'll answer the acquisitions first. Usually, in that case, we look to try to use one grant category to match another. So in that case, you might use, for instance, conservation futures from King County to match a state grant. You could do the same thing with the Snohomish County property. It's a little bit risky in that you could get one grant and not the other, and then not have a match. But the RCO also has a process later in the, later in the year where we actually have to certify our match, so it gives us more time to try to vet out what the match will actually be. The grant, technical completion deadline for these grants is May 2nd. We do a preliminary presentation to an evaluation committee in May, and then the final evaluations and presentations aren't until August. And then Cedar Grove Park, we've probably, I've reached out initially to some of the youth sports organizations as I can possibly use donated services, supplies, labor, and that sort of thing as a match as well.
And are grants more competitive when they have an identified match?
I think, in my opinion, what sells a grant is that the project itself, I think when you go into the room and make your presentation, the evaluators are just making the assumption that you have your match secured.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? No? Do you want to entertain a motion?
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion by councilmember Agnew, seconded by councilmember Sandberg. Oh, did I get that wrong? Okay. To adopt the proposed resolutions approving the authorization for submitting grant applications to the Recreation and Conservation Office of the State of Washington. Is there any discussion on the motion? No? All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you, Director Keats.
Thank you.
And I'm getting my thing back here.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I would just like to thank Director Keats and the Parks Department for being aggressive and going out for all of these grants. I think that's a testament to the hard work that they're, they're doing to examine every option possible to secure these, this funding for our parks. So thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we're on to AB 16-058, consider Parks and Recreation Board recommendation regarding naming of park and consider adoption of resolution. And we have Director Keats to provide a staff presentation.
Okay, thank you, mayor, council. Here we go again. Yeah, earlier in the year, staff was informed that there was a need to actually consider a permanent name for what we now know as the Half Acre Open Space. And just for way of knowledge, it's located just adjacent to McMinimans and Popkinie Stadium. And as I mentioned, actually got notification to work on a permanent name for what is now known as the Half Acre Open Space. So what we did is Parks and, Parks and Recreation Staff and Public Information Officer developed a brief community engagement process to solicit some potential names for the park that would be consistent with Resolution 1258, which is the resolution that provides guidance for naming parks and public facilities. Through that process, we received roughly about 25 possible naming suggestions. The Resolution 1258 does provide the guidance for naming public parks, and the policy states that potential names be based on the following criteria, no particular order, in its neighborhood or geographic identification, a natural or geographic feature, historic or cultural significance, historic figure, and, or as required by a potential purchase agreement, which wasn't the case in, in this particular instance. And so the resolution further states, city council shall designate the names of parks and, and Parks and Recreation facilities and make a selection after receiving a recommendation from the Bothell Parks and Recreation Board. The name is suggested to remain for a minimum of 25 years. And in this particular case, the Parks Recreation Board met and recommended a permanent name of Horse Creek Plaza. Horse Creek actually came up in a number of the suggestions, just by way of information. Some of the other suggested names were Alliance Park, Bothell Lifetime Park, Peace Park, but Horse Creek Park and came up in either Horse Creek Carp or Horse Creek Plaza. The board felt that the site resembled more of a Plaza type of scenario, so hence the recommendation for Horse Creek Plaza. That concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions.
Excellent. Do we have any questions for the Parks Director? No? Entertained a motion? So we have a motion by councilmember McNeil, seconded by councilmember Agnew to
I have a better name, Open Space Plaza.
To adopt the proposed resolution approving the authorization, oh, whoa, sorry, I'm on the wrong one there. You threw me off. You threw me off. Oh, there it is. Okay. So the recommended action is to consider the Parks and Recreation Board recommendation to adopt the proposed resolution officially naming the half-acre park space as Horse Creek Plaza. Any discussion on the motion? Nope? Councilmember St. Abie?
Great, thank you. I'll support this, but I'd also like to have council look at this resolution for naming parks to maybe add some other possible criteria for naming a park. I, I think it would be fitting to also include members of public safety that gave their lives in the line of duty as a possibility, not just limited to the armed services. And there may be some other criteria that other council members may come up with, but I think that it's, it's really, it's pretty, I think, pretty limited. I'd like to be able to expand it a little bit. So I, I'll support this, but I'd also like to revisit this resolution to maybe look at some other inclusive options for naming.
So I guess we could add that to the projected agenda at some point when convenient for staff. Sound good? Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Nope? All those in favor, say aye. Raise your hand. Aye. Opposed. Passed unanimously. And we are going to break. Do we want to do executive session during break, City Manager?
I think that'd be most efficient, Mayor, if council were willing to do so.
Okay, and it's for litigation matters, correct? That's correct?
That's correct.
So, and we need 20 minutes or so, or how long do we need?
I think 20 minutes would accommodate.
So the city council will be in recess for 20 minutes?